If everyone will please stand for the pledge of allegiance and please remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, one hundred hour, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Mathie.
Here.
Councilmember Bowlin.
Here.
Councilmember Malambe.
Here.
Councilmember Emig.
Present.
Councilmember Painter.
Here.
Councilmember Carrillo.
Here.
Councilmember Black.
Here.
Councilmember Crable.
Here.
Councilmember Bray.
Here.
Mayor Renner. Here. Thank you very much. At this point, we have no appointments, recognitions, thank you, and we will move right along to public comment. Just to clarify that if you want to get immediate answers or engage in dialogue with any of us, or to get, hopefully, problems solved, I have a mayor's open house between 4:30 to 5:30 right over here at the Fishbowl before every regular city council meeting. And that can get you some interaction, perhaps questions answered, but our policy is to not directly respond. This, with public comment, is a time for you to share your opinions without response from members of the council. And so, I'm going to go ahead and start with Isha Galapudi. Excuse me. I apologize. I'm sure I butchered that issue. I'm sorry. Please come forward and how badly did I mispronounce your name?
It's Isha Galapudi.
Okay. Not that bad, except the first time. Okay. Thanks.
Maybe. I was here to talk about the Youth Mural Project, actually, which is an amazing thing. My name is Isha Galapudi, and I was fortunate enough to be a part of both the first this year and last year's Youth Mural Project, and I wanted to thank everyone who happened to be a part of this. I would like to thank our city council, you, Mayor Terry Renner, Illinois Art Station, West Bloomington Revitalization Project, and yeah, because without the dedicated work of everybody, none of this would have been able to happen, and it was an amazing opportunity for everybody. Eighty-two percent of people wish they had more experience with the arts growing up, and with these projects, you're really not just brightening our community with the amazing artwork we put on the streets, on the walls, but you're brightening the lives and the future of many children who are also wanting to be more than just kids who know, like, what you stick to in school, which is an amazing opportunity we were given when we got the chance to be a part of the Youth Mural Project. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Now, Robert Valentini. Robert? And then I have, not a name, but Illinois Black Chamber of Commerce, and then Connie Marrero.
I just want to make it really brief. I talked for the last two weeks, so it's the same song and dance. Basically, the Connect Transit, we've all heard it from many people, so I'm not going to bore you. I just wish you guys, you know, wish the council would really think about the budget and what they're planning on doing. You know, I've been around here over forty years. I've never seen this year so bad as it is, you know, as far as cutting routes and fixing routes now. Okay, that's fine. But you're going to fix a route, you're going to do a two-hour, you know, delay for people who need to take the bus. You've got to catch the bus. You know, if you're going to go, got to go to work, you're going to have to be at work two hours early. You've got to do your doctor's appointments. You've got to be two hours early. That doesn't make sense. Does anybody here want to be at work two hours early? Probably not. Common sense. But anyways, reject the budget. I know you guys are all made up and pretty much made up their minds, but, you know, I'm here. I don't, you know, I'm here alone tonight, but I'm here, and I'm not going nowhere. So, that's the only thing I've got to say. Think about this budget, reject it, don't approve it, or whatever you want to call it. Send them back to the drawing board and come up with another plan. That's the only thing I've got to say.
Thank you, Robert. Next, we have Illinois Black Chamber of Commerce, Connie Marrero, and then Rujah Purwath. Yes.
Mr. Mayor, city council, citizens of Bloomington, my name is Cornell Darden Jr. from the Illinois Black Chamber of Commerce. I just drove two hours to be here tonight. The reason I'm here is because of comments made on behalf of you, Mr. Mayor, about race. And as we all know, race is a very sensitive issue. I'm a great fan of Clarence Thomas, in particular. If I could achieve half of what Mr. Thomas have achieved in his life, then I'll be a great man for that, and as well as my two sons. And I just want to say that usually what we find when we have an environment like that, a culture like that, we find other things. And in looking at the history of Bloomington, when it comes to procurement, we find that the record of procurement is actually god-awful. It's actually abysmal, and would love to discuss that with you. I know that you have never seen me before, and I'm not here to be adversarial at all. I think that, you know, moving forward in the future, you know, situations like that can be mitigated, and that, you know, we can definitely help fix those procurement issues. I think as a family, you know, anytime we have a problem, we should work to fix those problems. We shouldn't be adversarial towards each other. We should learn to understand each other and, you know, why we feel different ways about different things. Mr. Mayor, I know that you meant no ill will at all with that comment, and I want to make that very clear. But I think it is an opportunity for us all to grow together and so that we can learn from those opportunities. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Next, Connie Marrero, and then Rajuda Purwath, and I may have butchered the latter name. Sorry. Connie?
Hello. I've spoken before about sidewalks and other things, but I'm imploring you, please. I know you probably have your minds made up, but Illinois went how many years without a budget? Mass tran, or Connect Transit can go without a budget for a little while longer. They need to go back to the drawing board. They're asking us to pay for buses and increase their rates to pay for buses that they're getting grant money to be paid for. Doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me. I've asked questions, not gotten any answers. So, I'm just asking you, think about it from our point of view. We're putting money out to be able to, I can't drive, you know, so I have to rely on either somebody else or the bus system to get to where I've got to go. I've got a little guy back there that rode with me on the bus tonight, you know, and he loves riding the bus. But I'm not going to be able to do that if I have to show out, you know, four and a half dollars to go one way. I'm going to have to think about, okay, hmm, four and a half dollars one way, four and a half dollars back, hmm, that's nine dollars. That's a prescription for me. I've got to decide, am I going to get a prescription, or am I going to ride the bus? Can't do it. They're asking a little increase, no problem, but they're asking double, if not more than double. And it's not fair that us who are on fixed incomes, who are disabled, that can't do it, to do that. They need to go back and look at their, look at the budget a little bit more and tweak it other places than increasing some places where we need it, where we don't have a choice. And we're going to have to make that choice. So, please, I implore all of you, just think about it. If you want to talk to somebody about something like this, come to Phoenix Towers, anytime. Talk to them there. They'll tell you. Go to Lincoln Tower. Go to Wood Hill Tower. Sit at some of the projects, Sunnyside, some places like that. They'll tell you what kind of, you know, living on a fixed income is like. Sometimes I wonder if people do know that. Thank you.
Thank you. Rajuda Purwath? I must have messed that up. I'm sorry.
Yeah.
How do you say it?
Yeah. Hi, my name is Rajuta Durwath, and I was part of-
Oh, that's a D. I'm sorry.
Yeah. It's okay. Yeah. I was part of the Youth Mural earlier in June, and I'm here to thank everyone who helped that happen. So, thank you to city council. Thank you, Mr. Renner, and also to the Illinois Art Station for giving us this amazing opportunity. We were able to not only, like, express our thoughts, but we were able to voice our opinions on the pros in our community and the cons in our community. And even though, like, we had some serious topics in there, we did it with a lot of enjoyment, like, we really enjoyed ourselves. And I think it was very important for the youth to be like, I have a part in my community. I have a voice in my community, because whenever we're all going to grow up and leave, it's going to be like, I still have something where I grew up, which is, I think, is really cool. And just thank you for this opportunity. I really enjoyed myself in putting out my thoughts and views on a visual presentation for everyone to see. It's on a very busy street also, so a lot of people will see it in our community. But yeah, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Scott Steinle, and then Kurt Allen.
Scott Steinle, Ward five. My concern is several things. One, Connect Transit, you are expecting the bus stops to be further and further apart with fewer and fewer routes, with higher and higher fares. You know, and I know, that that's not feasible for some people. Some people on the city council, you people have no idea what it's like, you know, having so much to spend, period, and then you're out. Unlike the city, because they just keep raising taxes, they spend more, they raise the taxes. The other thing that is the sidewalks in this town. Everything I thought was to be ADA accessible in 1990, and I, it's long past 1990, and we're still waiting. They're still not ADA accessible. They sure around City Hall and the library, government buildings, but not around, not all over Bloomington. The potholes in this town are absolutely pathetic. And where is this going to stop? I mean, are you going to fix the roads and the sidewalks, or are you going to have more money in the slush fund? And that you can do with what you cotton-pick and please. And I tell you, Terry, this is getting to be pretty much, when you come into Bloomington and say, welcome to Bloomington, home of the potholes, high taxes, wasteful spending. Why not allocate a little more money if you're going to have, feel like you have to allocate it, to some of these people that really need it? You know, Terry, this is not Illinois West Lynn. This is the city of Bloomington. Not everybody here has got more than they know what to do with. Have a good day.
Kirk Allen, and then John Kraft.
Thank you. My name is Kirk Allen. Mayor, my comments are pretty much going to be directed to you. You probably anticipated that if you saw me walk in. It's been a couple of years since I've been here. The last time I was here, for those that aren't familiar with it, I spoke for about three minutes, just under three minutes, and amazingly, those three minutes were cut. I was the only speaker that night that did not appear in the future, and the excuse was, well, there was a glitch. My comments were spot-on then. Unfortunately, we didn't videotape that particular event, but my comments were gone. We videotaped it this time. Have you ever walked down the street and you have one of those moments that you turn your head and just something catches you? Well, that's a case I had a few weeks ago when I heard your comment regarding Clarence Thomas. I served a career in the military, and I've served with every kind of race you can imagine. And for my last time here that I spoke to you in the back, you made a comment about a policy that blew me away, and I said, what you just said was akin to the Jim Crow timeframe. And I'd have to go back and pull up the recording on it, but it was a direct racist-related comment. And now we have another one, that he doesn't act like a black person. How are they supposed to act? Is there some identifying mechanism that they are different than anybody else? And see, those comments reflect the real person, is what history has shown me. Through a service of more years than I care to count in public service, I'm just appalled that you're still sitting there and that you haven't resigned. You should resign, because your pattern of doing stupid things just continues to build, and it's evident over time that's not getting fixed. I would urge you again to please resign. Thank you.
Thank you. And let's see, I had a, oh, John Kraft, sorry.
Hi, I'm John Kraft. I've only got one comment. I would ask you to table item number seven I. More people on a board, like a transit board, should be a good thing. And if you want to eliminate a position, you should probably appoint a person to that vacant position, and then the first one that expires after that, you can eliminate that person or keep it. But more people on an advisory board or a board like a transit board is always a good thing. That's all I have. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. We move next to items on the consent agenda. Are there any items that any member of the city council would like to have removed from the consent agenda? Alderman Crable, I'm sorry.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, seven D.
Seven B?
D as in David.
David, okay.
And seven C as in cat.
Okay. Seven C. Alderman Crable. Anything else? Okay. Is it possible for me to have a motion, then, to approve the consent agenda as presented with the exception of items, and I'm listing these not in alphabetical order, seven D and seven C?
I'll make that motion, Mayor, that we approve this consent agenda as presented with the exception of item C as in cat and D as in dog.
Okay. Thank you very much. Is there a second to Alderman Bray's?
I second.
Second by Alderman Emig. Any further discussion? If you'd go ahead and vote. The motion carries there eight to zero. There are no nays to announce, Madam Clerk? Okay. Now, we move in the order in which they were pulled. Alderman Crable, item seven D.
Thank you, Mayor. Seven D is a consideration in action to approve a compliance commitment agreement with regard to a sanitary sewer overflow as requested by the Public Works Department. I sent some questions to Tim, and he gave me some good answers, but I thought it'd be good to share that with the rest of the council and the public. Thanks, Tim.
Then how are you, are you wanting me just to work through every single question and response?
I would just summarize it. I just, the main thing is, you know, how did it happen? Our response time to that, and mainly, are there any lasting effects? I know it went, some of that discharge went into the Sugar Creek, I think Extension they call it. Those are the main things.
Understood, and thank you for giving me a chance to prepare properly. The responses are these. How did the city become aware of the SSL? City was notified late on Thursday, January 24, 2019, by the property owner adjacent the railroad when they noticed water coming from the railroad right of way. Do we know when the overflow started? No, we cannot definitively pinpoint when that would have started. The question was the timeframe for which we actually fixed the problem. So, notified on January 24 of 2019, repaired in its entirety, January 28, 2019. Relatively short timeframe to correct the problem. Why was the manhole buried? Staff is not certain why or how the manhole was broken and buried. There's a number of conceivable possibilities, but we're, you know, it's unknown to us. Let's see. Is there a lack of communication between the city and the railroad that caused the delay? And again, that was the timeframe between the 24th and the repair on the 28th. And no, we don't consider there to be a breakdown in communication with the railroad. How much of the overflow got into Sugar Creek? A fair amount. You know, for whatever the timeframe was, that there was an overflow, it did hit a branch of Sugar Creek. Sugar Creek was flowing at that time, so it did. What kind of environmental problems did that create? Staff walked the stream downstream of the overflow and did not notice any debris that needed to be cleaned up. The flow itself was carried downstream by stream flow. And then, any need to clean up Sugar Creek? And that circled back to question number seven that- that there was nothing noticeable by staff as they walked the stream.
Thanks, Tim. I just kinda wanna add or comment on what you said. And based on your description, I don't think there was any type of unreasonable delay. I thought it was handled very well by Public Works based on the description in the packet and what you've added on there. Thank you.
Okay. And Alderman, oh, excuse me. We, so are you prepared to make a motion then to approve? Okay.
I move to approve item seven D as a David on the consent agenda.
Okay. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Second by Alderman Black. Any further discussion? Go ahead and vote. Motion carries eight to zero. There are no nays to announce, Madam Clerk. And we move to Alderman Carillo, and it's item seven C.
Yeah, I just had a couple of questions about this. I noticed that the, the bid had gone out on May 28, and was just curious, I, you know, I shot some of these questions ahead of time to Tim, but just curious about whether this is a normal or abnormally short period of time. And given that the roof that needs to be replaced is 20 years old, seems like we had known it for some time. So just curious about why, you know, why things happen in that timeframe.
This, this repair to the police department roof was something that's been on our radar and knew that we were gonna do it for quite some time. So it had been discussed, I think, at some council meetings, staff reports, that kinda stuff. But to your specific question about when the RFP goes out, the request for proposals, and then the timeframe, and then before we're opening, the bid openings and grant the award, oftentimes to the lowest responsive bidder. That is a normal timeframe, what's captured in, you know, the memo in seven C.
So the other question that I have for you, Tim, or for staff, is, you know, given that we don't have project labor agreements in place that specify that we need to hire local for publicly funded workers, and that's a discussion for another day, but personally, I'm of the opinion that we should have those in place. I'm curious what, if anything, we were able to do in this particular occasion to recruit local labor to, to bid.
I would say the city of Bloomington, when we're talking about any type of project, we're a good customer. And it's one that the local contractors, local labor, you know, even those, you know, outside of central Illinois, we're very much on their radar. If you'd like a staff report on the actual process, I can work on that and provide that. But I am satisfied that just the fact that we are the city of Bloomington, we spend several million dollars on projects that we really are on the radar of all of those that might be interested in bidding on the projects.
Yeah, just gut, gut-wise, maybe that's, that's too quick of a question to ask, but what is your sense about why we didn't get more local bids on that?
Well, I don't know. I, I don't wanna speculate. I mean, anytime when you have a bid process, it could have been low enough, you know, that there's bigger projects out there in the region, could have driven a low number. I'm not dissatisfied with the number four. There was a wide range in the amounts that were being bid, and even the range, oftentimes you'll see a high number, and sometimes, I don't wanna say often, can be attributed to they've got too much work already. But if the city is going to accept my bid at this higher number, I'll make room for this project. So there's a variety of reasons.
Gotcha. Thank you so much, Tim.
Okay. Any other questions? Is there a motion then to approve this item as presented?
Yes, I move that we approve item seven C as in cat as presented.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
A second by Alderman Painter. If everyone will go ahead and vote, assuming there were no other questions. Okay. All right, the motion carries eight to zero. There are no nays to announce, Madam Clerk. We move right along then to our regular agenda, and we have item eight A, which is consideration of an action, excuse me, and action on an ordinance approving the memorandum of understanding between the city of Bloomington, Illinois Wesleyan University to support marketing and redevelopment of the properties in the 800 block of North Main Street, again, the former Mennonite hospital redevelopment area, as requested by the Economic Development Department. And I'm going to turn this over to our city manager, who has about a five-minute presentation, and then we have about a 10-minute council discussion budgeted. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, and council. Just real quickly, items eight A and eight B are connected. In the order of things, this one obviously had to come first. The city and Illinois Wesleyan entered into MOU, memorandum of understanding, a couple of years ago to market the Electrolux property, 800 South Main, the Mennonite nursing, it has a number of names. And so that MOU has been in place for the last couple of years. What's before council tonight is a very similar MOU. Number of the things are the same, with the exception that both parties, Wesleyan and the city, believe that we should market this professionally, and that would be further detail on that professional marketing agreement would be captured in eight B. If there's any additional questions of me, I can respond to those. We also have Carl Teichman that's in the audience, if there's any specific questions of him. And Carl, obviously, is with Illinois Wesleyan University.
Okay. Questions? Discussion? Motion?
I have a question.
Oh, a question. Alderman Crable.
And so just to make clear, I know this was, a TIP was looked at for this, and that may be a possibility that the realtor, you know, would, would advise as possible, but certainly not guaranteed.
That's definitely accurate. I, it might be eligible for enterprise zone incentives, but the TIP for other possible development incentives, you know, that's one that we would entertain those. But we're not gonna, you know, jump out and that be the first thing that we consider. I don't wanna, you know, also describe it as a last resort, but incentives is something that comes later. We think the property itself marketed properly can stand on its own two feet as far as potential.
And then just one more question. And again, I see this as a guideline and not a mandate, that with regard to making sure units are market rate, and we don't look at college students or senior citizens. Again, that's a guideline, and if somebody comes to the broker with maybe mixed income type of development, that's certainly something that we would consider.
It is. And the thing that's, some of the outreach that we've heard publicly and the elected officials privately, you know, some of the concerns, you know, for some of the adjoining neighborhoods, at the end of the day, we control this. We control whatever development might come to the broker if eight B is in fact approved next. So yes, you have those ultimate controls, you know, one with the existing zoning in place, and then two with the type of development if it might deviate outside of the existing zoning.
Thanks, Tim.
Alderman Black, and then Carillo.
Thank you. I think this question might be best presented to Jeff, and this is more of a process-level question. Given that this is, and I know the answer to this question, but I wanna just be clear for the record, given that this is a MOU involving Illinois Wesleyan, a potential deal down the road with Illinois Wesleyan, would, given that you work for Wesleyan, would you need to recuse yourself from this, this conversation?
No, and I never have.
Right.
And especially when it comes to things like economic development, I wouldn't be doing my job here if I did.
Absolutely.
And as a, as a tenured full professor, even if people were mad at me at Wesleyan, they couldn't do anything to me or my salary. So, yeah, I don't, I don't have any particular need to recuse myself, especially since there have been many, many issues that I've worked with Wesleyan on, which I had to work with Wesleyan on for economic development.
Yeah. And I know that. We've had this conversation before, but given a new council, and just wanted to be clear that Jeff, you agree with that.
Yeah, this isn't a contract with Wesleyan, the defense got a financial, you know, if they're not contracting with the city to purchase something or vice versa, this is basically, we're marketing our two properties together.
Gotcha. I appreciate the clarification.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanna back up what council member Crable had put forward, that I would love to see some mixed income development come forward as a proposal. Of course, I can't make that happen on my own, but I do wanna make sure that, that we make it clear to everybody that those are just guidelines, right, and that we are not restricting ourselves. And particularly if there's, if the conversation is gonna come to incentives potentially being given to the development, then I would strongly encourage us to consider us some set-asides for low-income and moderate-income housing.
Alderman Emig, and this is in your ward.
It is. It's okay. I just wanna reiterate the importance of providing public input on whatever transpires here. And we want to maintain a certain historic aesthetic as well as potential innovative economic drivers, so that, I want to honor that. I'm optimistic about how this is going to proceed, but will vote nay, just as a represent, to represent other points of view among my constituents. Thank you.
Alderman Bray.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm also interested in, in these, kind of these touchpoints that Alderman Emig has, has pointed out, the idea of preserving the historic feel there while also doing an economic development project that matches that as well as our goals. But I'm wondering if we don't have some mechanisms that, and some tools that we can use to bring out that public comment in, in order to shape whatever development occurs. So for that reason, you know, I'm going, I'm thinking that we have some tools. So, city manager, can you talk to us about some of the tools we can employ to capture public input and, and kind of delve into whatever projects are submitted, so that, that we can see that it aligns with our vision for the future for this area of our city?
Actually, something that city staff have discussed with Carl, with Wesleyan, if eight B, if the marketing, you know, component is approved, have already put on the radar of that broker that we would like public maybe output initially on what we feel are viable possibilities for this property. We, you guys have told us very clearly that you want the public input component, but we do already have sort of set in motion that requirement that there's some public communication about the possibilities of the property by the broker themselves, and then ongoing public input.
So thank you for that. So for that reason, I'm, I'm going to support this, because I think that we can get there from here. Thank you.
Thank you. And then just to reiterate the city manager's point, this council, oh, I'm sorry, just a second, is that when you own something, you can control it, absolutely everything. Alderman Bowler.
Yeah, I would just like to make a comment about input with public comment, 'cause there was some misunderstanding with Tim. We don't have a policy that it has to be on the agenda. So he could come, the whole neighborhood could come, just like they did with the bus group, and talk anytime and as often as they want, to try to convince us. It doesn't have to be at the meeting. So I just wanna make that clear, and even to the people in the audience here, that if you have an issue, we have an open public comment policy. So thank you.
Right. And they could come to the mayor's open house, make appointments, talk to individual Aldermen and women, yeah, Alderman Mathie.
Thank you. So I have a question, and Tim, I don't know if it's gonna be for you, if it's gonna be for Carl. I got asked today why the city took down the building on our side of the property, but why the other building on the Wesleyan side has not been taken down yet. And it was from somebody who has development interests, but they didn't know what was in play there. We obviously prepared kind of the ground for development immediately, but now there's a building sitting on the other side, and they, there was some confusion from a marketing perspective of what was going to be happening there. So I wondered if we could address that of what's happening, if this, is that something's happening soon? Is that not happening?
Thanks, Carl.
We're, actually, the city decided to handle the development one way, which is take the buildings down. The university took a slightly different approach, 'cause at the time the city was taking their buildings down, we were still using some of our buildings. We have now since completed the use of the buildings. They've been abated for asbestos and lead, and so we're just waiting now for someone to come in and potentially purchase, or talk to them about what is their best, in their best interest, in terms of getting either us taking the building down or working that into the price of what we end up selling our portion of that property.
Okay. Like I said, there was some concern from the gentleman I was talking to that with the building sitting there, he feels like it does not look as marketable to the outside world. And it was just a, I'm sure there's different perspectives on how this looked. I just wanted to address that, and, 'cause I didn't know the answer when he asked me. So, okay, so you're planning on leaving the building there until there's a proposal?
Right now we are, yes. Until we get a proposal.
Okay. That's great. That's what I need to know. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Anything else? Or a motion?
I'd like to make a motion. We approve as presented.
Okay. Second. Okay, we got a couple things. We'll go ahead and do, we'll do double Bs. Moved by Alderman Black, second by Alderman Bray. And at this point, if everyone will go ahead and vote, motion as presented. The motion carries seven to one. There's one nay to announce, Madam Clerk.
Council member Emig.
Thank you very much. Okay, and now we move to a, in a sense, a second portion of this, a consideration and action on an ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of the exclusive right to sell listing agreement between the city of Bloomington, Illinois Wesleyan University and Caldwell Banker Commercial Devonshire Realty. And I'm gonna go ahead and turn this over to Mr. Gleason. Any additional comments?
Yes, Mayor, just a couple. Wanted to share with council and the community, it's Caldwell Banker. They're located out of Champaign-Urbana, which is a very vibrant, you know, community as we are. So we think the matching between these two communities, there was value to us to make that selection. Also, it's gonna be a flat commission, you know, regardless of the purchase price of $100,000 when we do actually sell the property.
Okay. Questions of Mr. Gleason? Further debate, discussion? Alderman Black?
I'd like to make a motion. We approve as presented.
Okay. Is there a second? Okay, this time the second will be Alderman Crable, 'cause our secondor-in-chief is not here. So, any further discussion? If not, I see people are already voting, so, okay, you're ahead of me. All right. The motion carries eight to zero. There are no nays to announce, Madam Clerk. Excuse me. We will move right along then to item C, consideration and action on a resolution in relation to the Connect Transit Working Group as requested by the Administration Department. And then, Mr. Gleason, you have five minutes, and we have approximately 10 minutes, again, for council discussion.
Thank you, Mayor, and council. I plan on being done in less than five minutes, and I'll give my remaining time to you guys. What, what occurred in the past couple of months is a fair amount of public outreach, you know, input with the town of Normal, city of Bloomington, Connect Transit. So it's something that I think is relatively new at the levels that we have heard, but very much got our attention. And at last week's committee of the whole meeting, this council was very strong in directing me to bring a resolution back tonight, and that's what I've done. The resolution, you know, as I replayed the comments that I heard, and what, you know, the other conversations, I tried to find something that I'm confident the majority will support, if not unanimously by the board, but, you know, we'll call the item to vote here in a short while. But the resolution, I don't typically read the, the actual memo or the resolution itself, but I wanted to walk through section two of the resolution. You know, really, you've got Connect Transit that has appointed, through the pressure, a working group that has been tasked to address a number of the issues that we've heard, and even explore the possibilities. You know, some of the council members here, you know, at this dais has talked about, you know, through, through some of the exchanges, what's interesting is a conversation about what do we want our transit to be, you know, that Connect Transit serves. It's an interesting discussion that I don't know has really been asked before, but it's been asked now, you know, by a number of you, and that's gonna be an area that Connect Transit and this working group are going to have to address to satisfy this council. So the first step really is to give the working group the amount of time to actually dive in dive into all the questions, concerns, and also, let's say we identify that there's not actually, there's no substantiation for the problems. You know, still on the table very much is, okay, that's fine, but how do we improve? You know, how can we take what we're doing now that, okay, we found out is okay in these different areas, but we can even improve it and take it a step beyond what we're currently or have in the past been delivering our residents? Section 8, under 2, is if it is decided that the mobility fare increase is needed and warranted, and again, this is an outcome of that working group, I believe that there is a strong desire, you know, on this council's, you know, strong desire from this council to possibly amend the amount that we contribute and increase to cover that mobility fare increase, you know, if, in fact, that's a working group's recommendation. You know, it appears that even though we have not had an increase for the fixed route and mobility, it appears that there is a fair amount of support that to hold it a 13th year, you know. If it's been 12 years since we've increased fares, maybe that's something that this council desires. But again, that's a potential outcome, and I'm trying not to take my full five minutes. That's a potential outcome of the working group. B, to explore and propose creation of a reserve fund for doorstop service for mobility riders. This is something that we heard about inclement weather, you know, where there's those times where 24, 48, 72 hours, you're shut in because of the weather that's dumped on us in central Illinois. You know, it's not feasible to have Public Works employees shovel the sidewalks all the way to the doorstop or to the bus stop, but maybe in those rare instances, if we had a $5,000, $7,000, $10,000 reserve fund, could we allow for a mobility rider not to be shut in in those 24, you know, those extended periods? So, maybe in those days, it would be doorstop service just to keep their lives, you know, going as they're accustomed to. And C, explore and propose ways to improve and clarify the Connect Transit intergovernmental agreements. You know, this is an ongoing thing anyway. You know, let's always look at the agreements and see if there's ways that, you know, we can do things better, or whatever time has passed, you know, maybe some things don't apply, as they did when that was first created. And then, lastly, to prepare and bring back City Council comprehensive presentation by Connect Transit. Isaac Thorne or other staff, there is a 40-slide PowerPoint that I shared with council. I actually would like to bring that in front of council for the presentation to be heard by you guys. So, recommending approval. The first draft of this was shared with some of the other Connect Transit partners for their input, and what's before you tonight, council, is the resolution. It's the final draft for consideration. Thank you.
Questions, debate, motion? Again, motion doesn't stop.
Mayor. Tim, would you mind, first of all, you said that this was public knowledge with regard to the pink route, and what Connect Transit is going to do with regard to that and the frequency? Because I think there's some miscommunication on that or misunderstanding from people.
Yes. The question was the Orlando Place. You know, I know all the partners are very concerned about the, you know, the folks that live there, and we've heard very publicly about the elimination, the Olive Route. And the Olive Route, you look at the financial impacts, you know, it's something that Connect Transit has proposed, but you've got a council here, and I believe, you know, other bodies that are involved in this discussion that do not want to negatively impact those that live at Orlando Place. The frequency for which they have current bus service is hourly, and I believe a recommendation or a proposal, an agenda item for tomorrow night at the Connect Transit Board, is to do a pink route deviation, and I believe the frequency is going to be every 30 minutes, so actually increase the amount of availability for those that live in that area.
And Mayor, I would move to approve a revised resolution that I have submitted to all council members with the following amendments from -- that I've received since then, if I can read those amendments.
No, of course.
The -- let me get to it here. Under the second whereas clause, it would read as follows, before the first comma, "Connect Transit creates a vital service for the community, including those who depend on public transportation." And then, after the comma, it would go to, "While serving as a transportation option to all residents," that city and town, and the rest of it would be the same. And under the third whereas clause, under Part B, it would be changed to read as follows, "Voting on an annual budget prior to the start of Connect Transit's fiscal year." And then, I would move to strike under Section 3 of the revised resolution, Subpart A, discussing the pink route addition because of the proposal in front, that will be in front of the Connect Transit Board tomorrow night, that Tim just explained. That's it, Mayor.
So, you're making this alternative motion? Is that what you're saying?
A motion for a revised resolution. If that's -- I'm not sure exactly what that's called, but...
I mean, this is, correct?
Yeah. He's moving to adopt the resolution that he provided.
With a couple of amendments.
Not the resolution that's in the package.
Correct, correct. Everybody get that? Okay, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Alderwoman Carrillo. Any further discussion that -- well, we've got quite a few people. Start with Alderwoman, we'll just go around the dais, and Bray, Black, and Bowlin.
Well, I'd like to make a motion to approve the original resolution. I think that our City Manager and staff did an excellent job sorting out those items that we had particular consensus on. I think it's at the right level. It sets philosophy without getting too granular. It also sets up this necessary working group. We're showing our confidence in that group to accept and act on all the good input that have been received, and then we want to hear back from them, and I think that's exactly what we asked for. With all due respect, I think that the alternate resolution gets a little too far in to the weeds, and I'd like to see a resolution that kind of stays more at the philosophical level, so that it can survive throughout the ages, to set out what is our philosophy, and isn't subject to becoming stale or outdated because of the way that it approaches some of the issues. So, that's my motion to approve the original.
Point of order, I just want to make sure.
Yeah.
The motion made first, the motion made second, how that's supposed to be dealt with.
Well, I was going to actually turn to Mr. Jurgens. Do we first need to vote on the first motion, or? Okay.
Under our rules, if a motion would basically have the effect of rejecting the original motion, it's going to be in order. So, I think we would first need to approve it, to vote on the motion on the floor.
Okay. Right. Another motion, okay.
Thank you, Jeff.
So, hold that thought.
Thank you.
Okay. Alderman Black?
Yes, thank you. And so that answered one of my two questions. Is it possible to get kind of the verbiage up on the screen at this point in time? I don't know if you can send Scott an email real quick, because I know that we've made some changes, and I'm the kind of guy I like to see it in front of me, and what I have in front of me is a little different than what was just read.
You mean this thing? This?
Yeah. It's the way that Jeff was reading, it's a little different than what...
I don't do...
With all the things highlighted, okay.
There you go.
Thank you. But for the public's benefit too, would it be possible to get it up on the screen? Thank you.
You did -- he doesn't have it.
Scott Sprouse.
Well, okay.
Thank you. Sorry for that. I just, I think it's helpful to the public to kind of watch what we're talking about, and it's definitely helpful to me, because I don't think that fast.
Okay.
Okay. Shall we vote?
So, you're asking us to put this on before we vote?
While we discuss it, there are a couple other folks that wanted to weigh in.
At this point, Alderwoman Bowlin, did you want to weigh in?
I'll wait.
Until this one? Okay, so, it seems as if, oh, Scott, okay.
Yeah, I guess, I guess my concern, yeah, I see a lot of this, and I hear what we're saying. I guess I'd ask the maker of the motion, what is the new proposed resolution doing better than what was originally presented in our packet? Sure, I think it makes clear that we want the intergovernmental agreement followed. What about that intergovernmental agreement that we want followed? And with regard to what we were most concerned with, with regard to an alternative to the elimination of the Olive Route and staying fare increases, what the resolution is to the Olive Route situation, and I think the rest of it, let's see. And then, you know, Part B, for instance, or the new Part A references, making sure that fares stay at the current rate, including pass options, which would be like the monthly pass, focusing, discussing bus improvement, and some of the expression that were given with regard to who we would like to see serve on the Connect Transit Board of Trustees. Yeah. So, thank you for that. Well, I really don't actually disagree with much in this document. I think what's missing for me is our intergovernmental partners to the north of Division Street, and I really, we are at a point now where we have to engage with them. We can't be going on our own with this, with these issues. And I truly agree that the intergovernmental agreement absolutely has to be reviewed and revised. The lack of clarity around Section 8 specifically is deeply troubling, and even if we were to solve a lot of these issues in the short term now, we'll be having this exact same conversation a year from now or five years from now, so we have to get that taken care of. I'm interested to hear my colleagues. I don't know how I'm going to vote just yet, so I appreciate everybody's thoughts.
Alderwoman Painter.
Well, I'm going to vote for the original agreement. What we were handed today at 3:40, it doubled it in size. It reads more like an intergovernmental agreement than a resolution, and we weren't given enough time to discuss it with our city attorney and with our city manager. I think that the resolution that our city attorney and our, everybody else on staff came up with is perfectly acceptable, and Normal is on board with it, so I think that this is the one that I am going to go for. Thank you.
Alderwoman Bowlin.
Yeah, I'm going to vote with the original one. There's a few tweaks that I would like to comment about, but the details in the amended one, I believe, should end up being possibly worked into the intergovernmental agreement, because we need to work with Normal for those details. We can't just unilaterally say, this is the way it's going to be, and expect them to follow. The only tweaks that I put in, because this went out in an email, I just want to explain, in Section 2A, it says, if there's a change in fares, that it goes to City Manager. And I only want to add council and manager, because I wanted to reflect that it's a team effort. And then, in D, I wasn't aware that you were talking about that PowerPoint in this Section D. I do agree that that should come forward, but I additionally want that working group to bring back something with a deadline.
Have you -- I'm just saying you're talking about the...
Don't interrupt me, please.
Are you talking about the...
Yeah, point of order.
Yeah, there's a point of order.
Or the original one?
No, I'm talking about the original one.
Well, that's why that's not what...
Yeah, that's not what we're...
That's not what's in order right now.
You just talked about that, yeah.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
Okay, that's why I was interrupting. Yeah, sorry. Okay, at this point, we have a motion and a second, and if everyone will go ahead and vote on that.
On for what?
This is a substitute motion. This is Alderman Crable's substitute motion. The motion fails six to two. There are six nays to announce, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Mathie, Councilmember Bowlin, Councilmember Emig, Councilmember Painter, Councilmember Black, Councilmember Bray.
Okay, thank you. Now...
Now I can ask for it, okay?
Yeah.
I guess I move to tweak or amend the original resolution. In Section 2A, where it says City Manager, I would like to add council and City Manager for the reason I said, that reflects team effort. And in D, I guess you were referring to the PowerPoint that was presented to Normal Council last week?
Not just.
Just, okay.
So, your points that you had made previously, spot on with what the intention was under D.
Okay.
It's all the above.
Okay, but that it, I work well with deadlines. That's why I'm bringing this up, so...
So, are you making a substitute motion?
I'll make a substitute motion.
Okay.
For approving the original resolution with the two changes that I suggested.
And could you, I'm sorry, for the record, just repeat those two changes?
Oh, the change would be for the City Manager and council in Section 2A, and in Section 2D, that a date be added.
And specifically, what date?
Date before the budget is due to come before council, which would be December 1st, is that correct, according to intergovernmental agreement?
If I may, don't the fare increases start on October 1st? Would we not want to do it prior to that point in time, if I'm understanding what your intention is?
Like our first meeting September?
Oh. Well, I'm, I thought that the understanding, maybe I'm misunderstanding, I thought that the understanding was that we were going to let the working group do their job.
Right.
So, are they going to be affecting that rate increase?
I would assume so, yeah.
Yeah.
So, they will be done before October 1st? That's a question. I don't, I'm confused.
They're supposed to, yeah.
They better be.
Okay. Then it should be September. Then it should be September.
City Manager and then Alderwoman Bray.
Just real quick, the original question about when do, when does Connect Transit have to have the budget request before council, City of Bloomington, December 1st.
Okay. Alderwoman Bray.
I'd like to second the motion.
Okay. Motion seconded. Any further, you still have your light on, did you want to?
Oh.
Did we determine a date then for...
December 1st.
December 1st is section D.
December 1st. Alderman Crable.
Thank you, Mayor. I would have liked the resolution to be more detailed, but I'm certainly agreeable as it is presented with Alderwoman Bowlin's changes. I didn't hear anyone say that they necessarily disagreed with anything in the revised resolution, only that it got too much in the weeds. I respectfully disagree, but I understand, so I will be voting yes to the original resolution with amendments.
Any other comments? Okay, if everyone will go ahead and vote. Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry.
I also would have... I also would have liked to have seen the resolution be stronger. I think that we had a strong show from the community, asking us to take bold action at our last meeting. We did not vote to advance that item, and many of us decided that, or many of us stated that a resolution would be a viable alternative, and for that reason, I think we needed to have passed the strongest resolution possible, so I will not be supporting this item. But it's not because I don't support what the public has asked us to do, but because I think we have an opportunity to make a strong statement, and I think we are... I think we have an opportunity to make a strong statement, and I think we are missing that opportunity.
All right. Anything else? Okay, if everyone will go ahead and vote. The motion carries seven to one. There's one nay to announce, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Correa.
Okay, thank you very much. Motion carries, and we move right along now to Item D, which is a report of a classified non-union IMRF retirement by the Human Resources Department, and I'm going to go ahead and turn this over to Mr. Gleason, and then Josh Hansen will be chatting with us.
Actually, I don't think I'm going to call anybody up.
Oh, you aren't? Oh, okay, sorry.
And this just is quite simply in accordance with the Local Government Wage Increase Transparency Act, the city has its seventh classified employee triggering event with the retirement of Sue Witt. Sue's a longtime employee with the city, office manager with the Bloomington Fire Department. She's been with the city for about 30 years. Just the required notification to council.
Okay. Any council discussion? Any motion then? Well, excuse me, I guess we don't need, because it's just information only. Any other council, oh, excuse me, Alderman...
Is it required to state the amount?
We can. And the amount, because it is in the packet, the total increase in the pension liability of the city is $97,716.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Again, this is for information only. Excuse me, we did have a, yeah, anything else? All right, seeing none, we move to city managers' discussion.
Thank you, Mayor and council. First item is the Finance Director's Report. I know that we're giving a steady stream of financial updates, but it's just one that we feel is critical. And this is the normal Finance Director's Report, is what you're hearing tonight. Scott?
The typical.
What did I say?
Normal.
I don't have their words. Well, this is the typical...
We knew what you meant.
Right. That would have been a small N, so...
I can pretend to be Andrew. Can I? No. Okay, it's all good. As I had mentioned previously, we're going to be covering end of year FY '19, maybe even for one more meeting. We're still finalizing, no material changes over last month, where I reported for the general fund approximately a $2.3 million surplus. It's come down to 2.2. We have still audit adjustments and some finalization of some of the local taxes with penalties and things of that nature, but most of the revenues have been finalized as of this point. We've been through this chart several times, so tonight I was going to kind of approach it from, from a takeaway standpoint, you know, what's the key takeaways from each of these exhibits? So I'm going to hone in on that local use tax. That's the category where the internet sales tax are being reflected currently until the changes go into effect next year, when we can start, we'll start getting our home rule. That tax will then migrate up to the home rule and state sales tax sections. That's just the way the dollars flow into us. But to highlight that, we came in $400,000 over budget. The $1.9 million annual budget came in at 2.3. That internet sales ruling went into effect in October, so we basically had six months of the year with no effect. I mean, there were retailers, they, you know, they were listening to the wind, they started doing it, but I still think we've got potential additional revenues that we didn't capture in the 20 budget. We increased the 20 budget by $450,000 over 2019, so the 1.9, we took it up to 22.35. So a full year of the internet sales ruling in effect for 2020. I'm hoping that we're going to, we're going to kill that budget, to use the term like that. Before I move on, I wanted to highlight, when I met with City Manager Gleason initially about setting up this presentation, we decided to just take the top 10 major tax revenues for this exhibit, but I just wanted to highlight a couple that aren't on here. Replacement tax, that's another form of income tax related to personal property replacement tax. When that went away in the 70s, I believe, it's a form of income tax from corporations. That came in over budget, 225,000. So you can see, income tax came in over 675, so income tax in general, both those forms, very productive category for this year. We had the Department of Revenue in last week. They're trying to run through some of the explanations on that. They're not even sure why that's increased, some of the offshore changes that the IRS has made, could be bringing dollars in, corporations might be claiming dollars now, but we're just really not sure. It's kind of one of those categories, we don't really want to, you know, increase that too much in the future years, but we're hopeful that it continue. Packaged liquor tax. Food and beverage, I usually highlight that, came in, glare's getting me here, I can't hardly see it, $150,000, $160,000 over budget, packaged liquor, $91,000 over budget. So I kind of view that as a positive signs, local economy, people are going out, enjoying themselves, eating and drinking. Last comment, doesn't have to do with 2019, but I just wanted to let you, the council, know that the first month's worth of returns for a local motor fuel tax increase for May, our eight cents went into effect in May, those returns are due by June 20, the 25th of the following month. So all the returns that we've reviewed up to this point have included the doubling. So we sent out two mailings, we called everyone, but you know, this is one of those things, and it was in the, obviously in the press, but we wanted to make sure that that was happening, and it indeed is.
Scott?
Yep.
Could you go back to the slide, would you mind going back to the slide?
Certainly.
And I think you've told us about the home rule, sales tax and the state sales tax, why that's under, variances under.
Well, yeah, state sales tax, looking back at that one, we budgeted that one a little too high for the year. The home rule, you know, the explanation is the brick and mortar, the activity is just decreasing, more people buying online. So, I mean, that was the one I've talked about, we had seven months in a row where we were, we were running over, because we budgeted that one based on seasonality through the year, based on 10, 10 to 12 years of historical data. So we, we kind of, we view what we're, what we made last year, what we think the following year, take that number, and then we spread it through the months based on those seasonal trends. We had seven months over budget, and then we finished the year with five under budget. We just think it's that trend to purchase online versus local brick and mortar. So this whole expansion of the internet sales tax by the state that's going into effect, you know, it starts January next year with the facilitators, putting more burden on the facilitators, and then next July, local, the local tax is supposed to be captured by online retailers, hoping we start recapturing that. I mean, the $400,000 for local use, that's, that's a big offset to that home rule right there. Does that answer your question? Sure thing. I've mentioned many times, this is a very complex exhibit, it's just kind of, it rolls through the revised of the year-to-date, and then we've been focusing on that projected adjustment to the budget, but really, you know, the projected year-end, going, diving right down to the bottom, we were at 2.3 million last month, we're at 2.2. The takeaways from this exhibit, you know, revenue, revenues are coming in a little bit better. $300,000 better than budget. It's, there's variances among the categories, but $300 better, $300,000. Out of $105 million budget, I mean, that's coming in at budget, right? So the takeaways on the expenditure side, salaries and benefits, you know, that's 100, $1.4 million, not 100, $1.4 million under. I mean, I've talked about that several times, that's our vacancies, having difficult times filling those roles in the public safety. Contractuals, those are those purchased services, and also includes professional development. I think those kind of go in hand-in-hand. If we don't have the people, we're not spending the money. But that's a category we're really going to dive into the next budget cycle, and that's, there's 500 accounts in that category, and there's not any single one that's really driving it, but across the board, you know, we look at those four-year averages and everything, but it, that's a tough one to get our arms around. We're looking at including, kind of like what we do with salaries and benefits, a savings offset to that category, just anticipation of that, that one continually seems to run under. Interest expense and principal expense, that is not a recurring one. That is where, you know, we have to budget, you know, we're budgeting a year and a half in advance, almost, and we just didn't buy the equipment back a year ago that we thought we were going to buy, so that $500,000 between, you know, those two categories, principal and interest, that's not a recurring one, you know, we're going to, we held back on equipment purchases, we're going to be buying those, so, but we'll capture that in a budget. So the big things, revenue came in a little bit better, salaries and benefits came in way under, contractuals came in way under as well. A couple of quick comments about the 21.5 million you see at the bottom of the right-hand column. That's our projected fund balance for 2019. It's a very healthy fund balance. We've had a lot of discussions about that. You know, one thing I want to mention, we just had a, not a presentation, but an item on the agenda about sick leave buyback and the pension ramifications from retirements. Council has addressed that issue going forward. We're going to see, we think, you know, a significant amount of retirements this year, the final ones that are really going to have that sick leave buyback payout schedule affect those pensions, and then, starting next year, we won't have that. We may need to dip into fund balance for that. So I've talked during the budget cycle about potentially, if we come in with a surplus, we might want to pay cash for equipment from the year. Probably getting a little too ahead of myself here, but I think we need to keep that in reserve for now, and see what happens as far as these retirements go. This is a very high level, the enterprise funds, the takeaways on this one, I mentioned Gulf's revenue this year, very strained with the weather we've had, their ending fund balance is going to be kind of low, so that's one we're going to have to keep an eye on. And then the arena, I mentioned last month, positive news from the venue works, that's the venue side of the arena, the arena's two divisions. They came in with a loss of 286,000. I reported 292 last month, but finalized at 286. We went into the year, you know, it was approximately a half million dollar budgeted loss there, so very happy with that. Any questions?
Questions?
I just have one question, that 21 million that you said, is that reserves, or is that, what's the word?
That's, I mean, you can refer to it a lot of different ways, unrestricted or budgetary fund balance.
Okay.
So cash reserves for the general fund. The general fund's fund balance is probably going to be more 25, 26 million, because we have, we have a reserve that was, that's been built up, that was related to the utility tax increase we did a couple of years ago for pensions, public safety pensions. We're going to start eating that away, though, because the property tax levy is not covering the full pensions now. So there's, there's a restricted portion of fund balance that we don't report there, so that's unrestricted.
Okay.
And then, you know, we had discussions during budget cycle about our targeted fund balance, 15% of operating expenses, you know, so that's a $16 million, 16 to 17 million dollar targeted fund balance. GFOA says two months' worth of expenditures, that's more like 17%, you know, so we're in the 20% zone, but it gives us some flexibility, I think, to address some issues like we are with the sick leave buyback payment timing, and potentially have enough, you know, to use fund balance for that. It'll give us an opportunity to potentially wean ourselves off the capital equipment lease going forward, but those will be future discussions.
Thank you.
Your question?
Savings account, another way, too.
Sure.
Okay. At this point, thank you very much. Mr. Gleason, anything else?
Yes, I do. The schedule of events is up on the screen. And then also, do I have Chief Scott, just stand up, you don't need to come up, chief, but the two months, we need interim police chief, and longtime Bloomington Police Officer Greg Scott is one of the assistant chiefs, and he's serving as the interim police chief. That'll do it for me.
Thank you very much. And if you want...
Real quick, actually, Sue Witt, that was Item 8D, and Alderman Bowlin had a comment, and it's Sections 1 through 5 are the specifics.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I just wanted to thank Clay Wheeler for his great service. We had a really great turnout on Friday, and we will certainly miss him. We also had History Makers on Wednesday evening, and two of Bloomington residents, Judy Buchanan and her husband, of course, former mayor, Rich Buchanan, were honored, and that was, there were many hundreds of people present, that was a great event. Also, I was asked, in my mayor's open house, sometimes I give a little bit of an update, but I was specifically asked by some, a couple residents, a couple of others nodded, that there were some contrary views to some of what the council has heard from Life fill. They felt like they did not feel comfortable in public comment, but I do want to say, I believe that the differences, contrary differences or contrary points, were not so much policy-related as procedural-related, perhaps even some of the tactics that may have been used against not people who were oppositional, but were potential supporters. There was also a question about the $90,000 that Life fill receives, or had received until this year, from Connect Transit, and it seemed as if their tactics changed at the time that they no longer got money from Connect Transit. And then the question was, we didn't, I said, Tim and I didn't necessarily have an answer for, but it was a, what did the non-able-bodied gain from the $90,000 a year that Life fill had received? So those are perhaps perpetual questions, but I was asked to bring those forward, that there are some additional perspectives to the ones that we have heard. That's all I have. Councilmembers? I'll start with Alderman Painter.
I just wanted to say that on Saturday, I attended the Juneteenth celebration. It was a lovely event, and I know that there were several other council members that attended as well. Julie did, and Jamie, and I don't know if anybody else went, but it was really nice, and I hope it's an annual event.
Thank you. I was there, too, and I, we had a plaque, I forgot. Bad mayor. Okay. Other comments? Okay. At this point, we are going to go into executive session. For those of you who are here, you are absolutely welcome to stay. There will be a riveting motion to adjourn afterwards, but we have no, that's the way that I phrase it, we have no additional business that will be handled after we come back into regular session. So if you want to stay around, obviously, you are welcome, but we are going to move into executive session, and at this point, can I have a motion to move into executive session for the items that are, the item that is presented, 12A, Claim Settlement, Section 2C, 12, and we have approximately 10 minutes budgeted for that? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Bray. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, and I believe that requires a roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Mathie?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowlin?
Yes.
Councilmember Imig?
Yes.
Councilmember Painter?
Yes.
Councilmember Correa?
Yes.
Councilmember Black?
Yes.
Councilmember Crable?
Yes.
Councilmember Bray?
Yes.
Okay, all right, we will be in executive session soon. I'm sorry, there are no, no public comments are in order right now.
There was another person that was, that could be...
Okay, yeah, I'm sorry, it just, we, it, I may, again, I may have misspoken, I apologize, but we are not, at this point permitted, according to our rule, to take comments from the floor from the public. I'm sorry, Serena. Thanks. There were more than one person, I said Bloomington, right, right, of the people who were recognized at the History Makers, it wasn't just Rich and Judy Buchanan. Right.
Your mix off.
I'm sorry.
Your mix off.
Okay.